A lot, and what do y'all need? And never did they suggest a wall blocking their view, or more competition on parking. It's not like a broken record. Parking is a concern with the proposal as it stands right now for the old line shack. They, they, when I talk with people, they can talk about things like seafood restaurant, or more, um, more access on the west side like we have on the east side of the river. A place to dance. These are things that came up, but not, um, not more high-density housing, uh, not the competition for what's currently going on, but a way to really celebrate the atmosphere that we have. As a member of the museum, I also am really interested, invested in the historic ambiance that we have here. And even if it was architecturally done, or following all those historic codes, I think it would be a real challenge to make a six-story building blend in with what we have going. And, uh, I, I just don't think that would be a good addition to the skyline, to the community. And we don't need that kind of a competition or problem with our reputation. So, those are some thoughts that I had regarding that property. Uh, when I think of housing as being a need, uh, because I, I hear that a lot too, um, oftentimes it's affordable housing, which really we need to look very carefully at the definition of that. Affordable housing, is that, is that always considered subsidized housing? Or is it just reasonable, reasonable housing? Something that the regular, josh-mole person who owns a business in town can actually afford? Uh, something that fits into the lifestyle of who lives here? Um, I love the way that Superior Furniture has used what was here and made it useful once again within the historic district, honoring that appearance and allowing for more housing. But we need to make sure that it's not always what I would call high-end housing, with the marble countertops and the tiled floors and bringing the executives from Ada to, to here, because they're the only ones that can afford to live in this place. We need to provide housing for the people that are somewhere between subsidized housing and super-expensive executive homes. I, I think that there's a lot more people in that general middle zone than we give credit for. Um, even the term executive housing classifies a different income, a different social status, a different lifestyle. And I just think that we're really shooting ourselves in the foot by not providing options for the people in between those two brackets, in between the subsidized housing and the executive home. Where do those people need to live? And a lot of those folks don't own cars. They can't. They need to get, they need to be able to live within walking distance of their homes, which is kind of how towns like this got started. Your shoe shop was on the first floor, your family lived upstairs. Or you lived on the first floor and the photography studio was upstairs. And Billy Weaver's is a perfect example of that. There's a few others that I'm aware of. Um, they're not going to be competing for as much parking because they bike to work. And a lot of the folks in the riverside, west of the river neighborhood do bike in right now to already alleviate that. And seventeen units is going to push it over the edge. Maybe a couple nice little places, nice little apartments on the footprint that's there. Much more than that. That footprint doesn't, doesn't scream for development like they're proposing of that capacity. I was thinking of the new development west of Meyer and, uh, looking at the aerial view and I drive past it and I think, that fits that environment. It, it has grass around it, it has parking, it has covered parking, and, and there's landscaping in front of them, behind those structures. It fits that space. You take one of those buildings and put it on the line shack, and I think people will be disgusted. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Sparks. Can I live at 257 Downey Drive? And, um, I want to ask a question that no one else has addressed here. I'd like to ask the council why you turned down Greg Canfield's cash offer and gone to accept a total stranger that has done nothing for this community, unlike Greg Canfield? I think Greg's proposal for that, the use of that building is much better used than a six-story, seventeen-unit complex. I can't even imagine what that would look like on that little piece of property. And what is it going to do to the river? What is it going to, you know, the parking? Everyone else has addressed that. What is it going to do to our water supply? Who, someone else has addressed that. Um, my lawn is burnt up because I can't keep up with it every other day because we've got the little township using up all the water. Um, so I, I hope, I'm begging you guys to reconsider this offer from these total strangers and maybe reconsider Greg Canfield's offer. He's been a resident of this community for a very long time. And look what he has done for our community. He's done lots and lots of good, good things. I never even heard of this Copper Rock, whoever they are. So, please reconsider that offer and, you know, consider these comments, you know, take the citizens' loath opinions and, you know, think about that. Because I, I don't think the Copper Rock probably gives two cents about us. And I know Greg does. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm representing Dominic Santaro, who is my neighbor. He delivered, took the time and hand-delivered a letter to City Hall, um, last week. Uh, it somehow didn't make it to the record. Please look for that letter from Dominic Santaro. He lives at 213 West Main. He is very much against this proposal. Thank you.
I'm David Reed. I live at 521 Howard Street. And, uh, my wife and I own the theater in town here. I don't have a lot to say that hasn't been already said, um, because I agree with so many of the people that have spoken tonight. But I feel like if we allow this construction to go ahead, we're going to be the laughingstock. You're looking, you're going to sit here at the Riverboat and look across and see this giant excavation point staring back at you. And it's not going to match anything around it or look like our town at all. They're trying to do things in our town that are going to preserve the aesthetic, not, not add to, make us look like the next Ada or the next whatever it is. But they also object strongly to us paying for the, uh, what do they call it? The drawings of Williamson Works are going to work up. The Copper Rock, if they're, if they're proposing this, they should be paying for those. Those drawings and doing their own legwork and making it something that we would want to buy. I just don't think it's worth it. We'd rather have the land set empty and just be a sidewalk than have something like that built there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, thank you.
A little camera passing.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, thank you, everyone. This is Matt Hall. I'm a pre-construction manager at Copper Rock. I've brought a few things here. I'll try to cover them, maybe help answer some questions. But, you know, I think first and foremost, clarify that, um, again, it was up to six stories and up to seventeen units. And, um, part of the reason we do that is to kind of provide flexibility. And, um, there's no doubt it's a challenging site. And that's, uh, no news to, um, really anyone making something worth there, some legal requirements. And then there's a lot of things to, to get through before you can really make a project work. And we're ready to dive into that pre-construction diligence. But, um, we, first and foremost, we want it to be a good project for Lowell. Whether it be, like you said, four stories, five stories, however large it ends up being. But, um, you know, we, we want it to be a good project aesthetically and also how it works. So, we're looking at ways to add parking, ten or twelve spots along, in front of it.
Go where?
And, uh, well, there's, there's no parking in front of the structure as is. So, you have a hundred feet where currently there's no spots. And you can add diagonal spots on the other side, just as it is, so it matches on the one-way. Um, so we're looking at things like that to, to add as well.
All right. You guys have time?
Yeah.
I guess, uh, aesthetically, you know, we're, we're very pre-land. Um, we certainly want it to, to match the city and, uh, you know, be something that people look at and, and think is a very cool structure when you're eating at Flab River Grill. Um, I'm, I'm building a house in Lowell right now. Um, I'm a free, free supplier there. So, I've been looking at this undeveloped site for the past couple of years. Um, kind of been keeping in touch with, uh, the light and power guys for quite a while on it, kind of keeping tabs if anything's going to happen, if anything's going to happen. Um, and, you know, so when I saw the RFP go out, I, I jumped on it and wanted to give us, give our proposals some flexibility, um, on, on what we end up doing. But, um, you know, we're, we're investing in Lowell. We've, we've had other projects go here. We have other future projects that are going on here. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's going to be my community and, and others at Copper Rock as well. Um, and, uh, I, one thing I have written down here to change the subject a little bit, but there's a, I have this kind of a concern on some of the MEDC incentives and those kinds of things. And then there was another comment about having necessarily the executive housing. Part of the reason why we're, we're going after some of those incentives that are available to us is so we can keep the rents at a very reasonable level. You know, in our performance, we're not trying to, you know, build units that are renting for twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars a month like they are in Ada. That's not what we're going for here. Um, and I think, you know, adding good people down there is certainly going to be a benefit for a lot of the businesses. Um, having people that can walk, um, and provide business for, for everybody else on Main Street would, would really be a good benefit. So, we're, we're looking at a, a few different options that we discussed with the city. Possibly doing a commercial on the ME4 as well, and then some units above it. Um, and, uh, or, you know, a, a full residential as well. But, um, we're exploring options and, um, you know, we're, we're certainly excited about it. I'm certainly excited about it. Like I said, I've been looking at it for, for a long time now. Um... Just trying to, for me, I have stuff to add.
Stop to add, I love reading this book.
Well, thank you for your comments. I'm Dean with Copper Rock. I always say I title in twenty-five cents. Get to make up a coffee, but I'm an accommodative company. I'm, uh, still picking myself up. You never heard of us? I'm just kidding. But, um, jokes aside, we have worked in Lowell. Uh, Matt and his wife, Haley, are building their greenhouse in Lowell. A bunch of our teammates go work out there and we have ice cream and actually have beers in Lowell. So, it's not like we want to be good neighbors. We've actually hired Canfield to do work as a sub. If this project was...
That's Greg's house.
What's that?
They were the plumbers.
Yeah, they were the plumbers at my house. So, if this project does go forward and we were able to do it the way we would like, we would have every intention to hire Greg. That's not an issue.
Right.
Um, I think a couple of things. As far as the small footprint, you know, we study a lot of urban. When you look at the population of this area, there's a lot of really good towns in Michigan that have. To get some of those pricing down, you do need some density. You know, we don't love high-density projects. This just helped keep a price point down. It's a small footprint. We go vertical. And the other thing I think it's important to know is as cities progress, totally, your parking can be a mess. But we're the ones at risk if we don't create a project that puts bugs in the seat or brings renters into those units. The other thing that's important, we're not a hundred percent set that these will all be apartments. There may be some condominiums for ownership in there as well. We'd like to see a blend. We're still going to work through those details. So, we're not, we're not bad guys. We're not looking to come in here and create something that nobody likes. Since our first meeting with the city, and by the way, we've never once asked the city to pay a dime for designs. We've actually, we're hoping, we've already changed our designs based on community input. We're trying to tie in existing buildings. We have a lot of masonry. We're trying to make it look like something you'd all be proud of. So, we didn't ask the city to do the Williamson Works study, nor would we ask them to do that. So, I didn't know if we were going to show some of our stuff for that's the next time. But then we have, okay, we've, we've already made changes on that. Um, I think I covered a lot. Yeah, so, anyway, we just, we're not bad people and we don't want to cause a big stir. We're going to do a nice project here. So, thanks.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Greg Taylor with Copper Rock Construction as well. Uh, I'm just going to make a couple of personal comments. Um, Dean and Matthew have made a lot of comments that make business logical sense and that for you to consider. Uh, I'm new to Copper Rock. I've only been there a month and a half. But, uh, I'm excited about all the projects in Lowell and I'm happy to be involved in three projects here in town. Two new construction projects, one recent, uh, uh, new build, uh, where we have a tenant at the, at the, uh, at the west end of town. The personal comments that I want to make is I, I want you folks to know that I do have a sensitivity to what you're describing. I grew up in a small town. Uh, I grew up in Marshall, Michigan. Uh, you may have heard of that, which it does have a nice, small downtown. And as I'm relocating to the Grand Rapids area for this new opportunity with Copper Rock, I've chosen to live in Rochester, another community that has a downtown feel. So, I do have a sensitivity for that. And, uh, I've been involved in a lot of different, uh, projects over the years. And, uh, fortunately, been through a lot of the incentive side of things which these gentlemen behind me described. And I support all of their logic. And, uh, I want the city to know that, uh, I've not only worked with, but we are working with the best and the brightest in that sector of, of the legal arena, try to bring the best project we can to Lowell. And, uh, that's our intention. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last chance. Anybody else? All right. Moving on. Sanitary sewer repairs. Dan, try to follow that.
As you recall, back in mid-April, we were in the sinkhole that developed in behind the King Milling Building at 149 Broadway Street. Sinkhole was between the sidewalk axis around the building and the access driveway in the back of the building. We investigated it. We had a manual issues that we'd covered and we got those raised up. But in the end, uh, we discovered that there was a sanitary sewer main of ours that travels through that back area that was cracked and there's a lot of water and dirt entering the pipe, thus causing the sinkhole. Um, we, uh, we looked into how to fix it. We proposed getting this fixed, uh, this fifteen-inch sanitary sewer pipe. Like to fix it by a cure-to-place process, which basically, uh, allows the pipe to be repaired without excavation. They insert a, uh, impregnated, resin impregnated sleeve into the pipe and press it out to activate the resin so it hardens and basically, uh, build a new interior to the pipe. And this, uh, would seal up the cracks and the problems in the pipe. And it's an alternative to the actual excavation type repairs that would cause, um, issues as we take back behind the building through the access for King Millings. Plumber Environmental Services assisted us with the original investigation of the sewer lines. And they're knowledgeable of the situation. And they provided us a quote to make this repair of seven thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we did try to contact the second company, but they did not provide us a, a return quote. Made a recommendation that improved the King Milling sanitary sewer repair quote for this project.
All right. Any questions for Dan?
Yep. Dan, where exactly is the sinkhole? Is it in a roadway? No, it's in the grassy, between, between the sidewalk and their, and their access driveway behind the building. Okay. Excavator, we'd end up being into the access driveway. Okay. I just couldn't figure out the... Not sure how deep it is. Yeah. I didn't want to go driving around and walk around the access. It's in the backside, between the building and the river. Yeah. I disappeared in the lower bed and stuff. But, okay.
Anything else for Dan?
Other than just fixing the pipe, you got to bring in Phil to fill the hole and all that stuff?
We've, we've already taken care of that part when we did the rest of the work down there. So, we want to get this fixed before it causes some more trouble and makes it, causes it to settle some more. And also, we're having issues with contractors who are being busy. This will be the second project that, uh, that this company would have here in town to get done for us too. They're just hard to get here.
All right.
I'll make a motion to include the seventy-six hundred, seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars for plumbers to replace the pipe.
I'll support.
Motion on the second. Any other questions for Dan? Sue?
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic is absent. Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Bye, Dan.
Um, thank you for, uh, listening to me today. Um, I'm coming to you, uh, to, uh, ask the city council if we can purchase, uh, four additional, um, Axon body cameras. Uh, back in two thousand thirteen, uh, Lowell Police Department purchased, uh, four, four body cameras. At that time, they were brand-new. I believe we were the only, I, I know we were the only department in Kentucky to have them and probably west Michigan. Uh, that was the Axon Body Camera One. Uh, we had those for about five or six years. When they came out with the Axon Body Camera Two, which is a modern one now, um, we've had those for since, probably two thousand, well, mid-teens, I guess. Um, and these cameras are starting to wear out. We've got one camera that, uh, the activation button is becoming worn out. It may not work any, much longer. We've already replaced the batteries in it in months. And we're worried that they're not going to support the technology much longer with this camera. So, we're asking to buy four more. Currently, our body cameras are stored in an in-house hard drive, which means the officer comes in after his shift or maybe after the call, hooks, hooks the body camera to the computer, labels the, labels the video, puts it in a file, which is stored on a hard drive that's on the desktop. Um, storing the video locally has a potential for loss due to software or hardware failure and officer forgetting to download the video or the video becoming lost by other means. Our current cameras are the, are the number twos. They're about five years old. We talked about that. Um, as you can imagine, I'm still working, so I'm sorry. Um, the police department received several FOIA requests. Um, Eileen is our clerk, Eileen, our clerk, is our FOIA coordinator for the city. Uh, we get these requests from persons, attorneys, and other agencies. And now they're starting to include a lot of requests that say any and all recordings. So, um, which includes the body camera. Um, manually, manually redacting video and audio from a locally-stored video is very painstaking. Um, I know I can do it if we had the right programs on the, on the computers here. It's very time-consuming because they have to watch the video to see what's on there and what's being said. Um, and it's very difficult for us to do since we've only got one clerk. And she's answering the phone doing fingerprints and other things. Uh, myself, uh, city manager, and Sergeant Rodney Moore, we all attended a Axon Body Camera Roadshow, they call it, um, in Grand Rapids. They have representatives on hand to explain all their products that they, that they have for us. And the main things we were looking at was the new body cameras, a program called Evidence.com. Um, those are the two main things we wanted to see. Uh, they answered all our questions. It shows how it all works. Uh, it was a very informative, uh, event. Um, the Axon Body Camera Three, which is what we want to buy, has improved videos, reduces blur and low-light performance. I watched a YouTube video on, on it. And they had some, I think, comparison. With these cameras, I know from watching them that if we are facing the sun or facing a light source with a person standing in front of us, um, the person's almost silhouette. You can't see who it is. The new cameras adjust for that light. Uh, if we got to make a still out of a photo, there's a lot less blur, a lot clearer camera. Um, these, uh, new cameras will have multiple wake defaults. And what I'm wearing now only has one. So, if you're facing the wrong way, if there's wind, it may not pick up what was being said in the, in the video. Um, and it also has hands-free activation. These cameras have to have to actually, remember to turn it on. The new cameras we'd like to get is there's a switch that goes in our patrol car. And as soon as we hit the lights, the camera gets activated. And if there's two officers in the car, both cameras get activated. Or if there's somebody standing within thirty feet of the car within the first thirty seconds of the lights going on, their camera's automatically activated, which frees us up for one more thing we have to remember to do before we get out of the car. And when things get hot and heated, that's one of the things that the guys forget to do until they're already into the call and think, oh, I got to turn my camera back on. Probably the most heated feature of the package is the Evidence.com. This is a subscription we have to, we have to purchase. It allows us to download our video to a secure cloud site off-site. Um, Evidence.com is adapted to the needs of a small department. The service can be tailored to save videos for simple amounts of time, keep the posted property in line, return record retention standard. Right now, whether it's a traffic stop or it's a major arrest, it's saved until we decide to get rid of it on our hard drive. So, beating up a lot of hard drive on our computers. Where we can, this Evidence.com, if you start off-site, we go inside and set the settings for whatever it is, for thirty days, ninety days, two years, or forever. The computer automatically deletes that from our, um, our subscription. Um, it also has a redaction feature, which allows us to redact faces, license plates, or screens, which are computers, phones, or other screens, and the audio with a push of a button. Uh, we watched to do this at this demonstration. We, um, we purchased that part of the Evidence.com. Um, Eileen or whoever's doing the redaction, you could go on there and decide, okay, we want to dedact faces. We can dedact screens. And then they can pick audio that they can, they can shut off. The reason we need that is we have to give a video out to an attorney. The only one that can see our computer screens that shows lean information are police officers. If we give it to an attorney, we're technically breaking the law. And right now, the only way we can do that is by cutting that whole part of the video out. Okay? Um, and, uh, Evidence.com will also allow detective or clerk to share the video or FOIA request to a FOIA requester, the court prosecutor, um, by setting up a link. We'll download the dedact, redacted video, set up a link to it. We call them up and go to this link. They can download the video, which is going to save us money, um, via our detective time, by running that, that, uh, hard drive, whatever it is we're going to give them to the other person, saving copying and downloading times, the cost of storage devices, and again, like I said, our, our, and travel. Um, added to the Axon quote is a TAP, which is a technical assurance plan. Um, TAP is a no question warranty in the Axon hardware. The hardware is the camera and the docking station. Um, TAP will also automatically replace the hardware every two and a half years. In other words, if we buy this subscription, this four-year subscription, in two and a half years, we get brand-new equipment. And if there's an upgrade in, in those two and a half years, we get the upgrade. So, we're getting old for new. Um, the Lowell Police Department is asking to replace our four Axon Body Camera number twos. Um, Lowell Police Department is asking to replace our four Axon Light Body Camera Number Twos. They're requesting to purchase the Axon Body Camera Threes as a replacement. We're also asking to purchase the Evidence.com with a ten gigabyte storage and redaction assist. The four cruiser Axon signal switches, which are the deals that when you turn the lights on activates the camera on. And to subscribe to the Axon TAP program versus the TAP Assurance Plan. The total cost for the, for this is thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Paid an annual install fee of six thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, uh, eighty-eight, six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents through September of twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Um, I noticed that you did talk about the signal from the vehicle. Did you look at the taser and the sidearm act?
They have those also.
Were you thinking about that or part of the deal or no?
I think, well, I'm talking to the representative, cause I've talked to a few officers that departments have had those. They've taken them up because if they've got it, either, either the, the switch falls out of their holster or it hangs up the gun. So, um, I've been talking to the Axon people. We went to see their stuff. I asked the guy about that and he says, yeah, they're, they're working on, uh, probably developing their own holster. Cause these are just add-ons to a holster you already have. So.
I, I just hear they offer them.
Yep, you can get it for your car, you can get it for your taser, you can get it for your, your sidearm.
Any other questions for Chief? Alright, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase from Axon, uh, for thirty-four, four fifty-five, forty-four. I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilman, Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic is absent. Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Leah, Boarding Commission reports. Alright, uh, Leonard coming up.
Yep.
I have none.
Same, Mike sitting down to you.
A couple items. Uh, first thing, the street projects, uh, began last week. They're working down half around, reported a gain, uh, an eighth drive to start. Um, and they'll be working, I believe next week they'll be working on Church Street. Um, they're gonna try and do most of the work on, especially on, daily based on Church Street in the early morning hours, before much, before noon. So, uh, we're moving forward on those. Um, I've been getting daily data for the water plant. Um, for the month of, for the month of July, um, I would say we actually had pretty good, um, numbers. I'd say on, on average, we're pumping about a million, um, just over a million gallons a day. It was about half million to the township, just over half a million gallons a day to the township. Um, for the month of, uh, July, just under thirty-two million gallons of water were pumped. Uh, just over sixteen million to the township. So, um, we're not, we're nowhere near approaching that one point three, one point two million. I think there was one day where we had one point three million during the month of July. So, um, we are still working on moving forward with plant expansions and things of that nature. Um, the USDA project, um, we are working on getting this out for bid this fall. There's a number of items that I met myself and Jessica met with, uh, USDA last Friday. There's a whole number of issues we gotta get that we're working on, so I've been spending a lot of time on that. Um, prior to my vacation, we did have some code enforcement issues pertaining to feather banners and a, um, hot air balloon above, above one of our marijuana establishments. Um, all have been noticed, um, and all are in compliance at this time. Also, today I did receive the, um, the data from the, uh, from the environmentalists from Front Street. I'm still going over those and hope to have information for you at the next meeting. That's all I have.
Awesome. Any questions for Mike? Reportments are full. Council comments, Leah?
Um, yeah, I wanted to bring up, it's come to my attention by a few residents, um, that they are seeing a commercial, um, that is, by the Chamber of Commerce and their complaint is the lack of diversity in these commercials. Um, so I wanted to say that I hear you, um, that Liz, um, the director at the Chamber is well aware of this. We are working to diversify those commercials moving forward. Um, it is something that I am passionate about, um, because when I look around Lowell, um, we are the first community. And it should represent that when we are advertising our thing. That is it?
Alright. I attended the Fallsburg Festival. It's the one hundred and fiftieth out there. Uh, it was very well attended. Um, I was up in the car show area because I brought my doctor's buggy out of the building and I brought one of my old rocks out there and lots of people, young folks too. It was really good to see him and showing our children how hard it was to get anything done, uh, back in the day. Uh, Cliff was the MC. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight to tell you what a wonderful job he did. But, um, we'll wait for him to get back and then he can write about himself. Uh, there was bands all day. Uh, they, they had food out there. It was reasonably priced. It was five dollars. I got you a hot dog, chips, a bottle of water and a Freezy Pop. Um, and it was, like I said, it was well-attended, so it was very fun to get out there and be part of that. For sure. Jim?
I'll just remind everybody to get out on boat tomorrow. There's a lot of good things out here that need to be addressed. So hopefully, uh, we're busy here tomorrow at the pools.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I don't have anything. Jim?
Make, that, make a motion at eight fourteen.
Support. Motion in a second to adjourn at eight fourteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed or adjourned.